Good evening, everybody, and welcome to July. It is hard to believe that we are halfway through the month of July already and had a wonderful holiday celebration around Independence Day, and we are so thrilled to come together today to talk about good business for the city. We do have our new city manager in waiting. Todd Meredith is here with us, as well as our interim city manager Craig Meadows, and we're happy that both of them are with us this evening. We do like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll ask that everyone please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And at this time, we'll ask that you join us in a moment of silent reflection to prepare for the meeting, for silent prayer, or to gather your thoughts as we come together. All right, council, thank you all very much for coming together this evening. We do have Todd Meredith here, and we are thrilled to get to tell you a little bit more about him. We'll even let him say a few words if he wants to this evening. You know, Radford was fortunate to have leadership from David Ridpath for many, many years. He retired at the end of last year, and we began a process. Now, we were really lucky that on an interim basis, we were able to have Craig Meadows come and work with us, not only an expert in the field, but an expert in our region, who had a lot of connections with people, knew the lay of the land for the New River Valley, for Virginia, and for the city of Radford. But it also set the bar pretty high as we were moving forward and looking for a new city manager. We had to find a person who not only knew this area, knew this region, and whose heart was in the New River Valley in southwest Virginia, but who had a 21st century approach toward local governance. After a nationwide search, we had candidates from across the Commonwealth and even outside our region. We were fortunate to be able to interview Mr. Meredith, and I think council was duly impressed with his skills, his attitude and outlook, and his ability. I think this community is going to do very well. I want to read you just a little bit about him, then we're going to give him the opportunity to say a few words. Mr. Meredith has served as the town manager of Perrisburg since 2017, and prior to his work in local government, spent a decade as a public school teacher. I'll pause for a moment there and just say this: That is a very attractive part as we deal with very difficult subjects, very complex subjects, to help share with our council, with our community, with our entire city. Having someone who is good at contextualizing, good at curating information, and presenting it in a fashion that is digestible and understandable is a true asset for the city of Radford. During his tenure in Perrisburg, he led initiatives focused on infrastructure improvement, fiscal responsibility, and regional cooperation. He also served as the board chair of the Giles County Public Service Authority and is a member of the Board of Directors for both the Corillian Giles Community Hospital and Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facility Authority. He has earned his Master's of Public Administration from Virginia Tech back in 2012, is pursuing a PhD in Public Administration at Virginia Tech, and holds a Bachelor of Science in Social Science and a Master of Science in Education from Radford University. In 2023, he completed the Senior Executive Institute at the University of Virginia's Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service. He has completed Lean Six Sigma Green Belt certification through the Terry College of Business at the University of Georgia with specialized training in organizational efficiency and performance improvement. Our council is really proud to have worked through this together and a comprehensive search process to find the very best candidate we could for this role, for Radford's future and for our community's sustained success. And so with that, we'll turn the mic over to Todd Meredith and let him tell you just a little bit about him.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those very kind words. Most appreciative to be here this evening. Thank you, everyone that's here this evening as well. Most appreciative for the opportunity that you all have given me to work with you all. Radford is an exceptionally beautiful community. I remember spending many, quite a few years here, working on my undergraduate and master's degree at Radford University. And also, I went to high school at Giles High School, so I'm familiar with Radford. I haven't always been on the same side of the playing field, but, and we lost a few of those, so. But I'm very excited to be here. I remember Radford being very passionate about the high school, about the community. Everyone here is very passionately a Bobcat, and I think that's really, really quite a good atmosphere to come into. I look forward to working with the council, to chart a vision for the city. I know that we're, that everyone's excited to get to work. I'm excited to get to work. My goal is to provide you all with an organization that is strategic, it's aligned with your vision, your values, the values of the community, that's not only strategic but also responsive. These things are always changing, sometimes by the day or the minute. So we want to be responsive to those changes and the ever-evolving needs of the community, and we want to be efficient and effective. You know, some of the Lean Six Sigma stuff, we can be strategic and we can be responsive, but we also want to do those things in a manner that provides the highest quality service possible at the cheapest cost possible. So I look forward to working with staff and working with the council to get those things accomplished and to build on the many great things that the Radford community already has going on for itself, so.
Well, we are so thrilled to have you join Bobcat Nation and have you come over to this side of the valley. We know you're no stranger to the area, but so many of the things that we talked about in your interview that should help all of our community grow and thrive and prosper, looking for those areas where we could be our very best, where we can improve and make changes, where we can find savings that help us continue to be sustainable and grow, and finding efficiencies that help us do things that we need to do and that we want to do even better. So we know we're all really excited to have you join us, and you're going to look great in black and gold. I can tell you that right now.
I have the gold, I just need the black.
Counsel, any other thoughts before we formally just say, let's welcome Todd? His first day will be next Monday, and officially, although he's unofficially been a part of things for a little while now, since we were first able to bring him on board here?
I think we're all excited to have you. We were all very impressed with your resume and getting to know you and the assets and the, just, you know, what you're bringing to the city. We're very fortunate to have you and to work with us, and we're all looking forward to that, and you getting to move into Radford and be a part of this community. And we just, we're very fortunate, and we appreciate Craig's time with us, and we look forward to our time with you. So thank you for taking on this role, and we can't wait to get to work with you. Thank you.
I'm saving mine till the end.
Okay, all right. Well, council, we will move on then, and we're thrilled to have Todd join us tonight, but also to have us join us officially next Monday. We do have some minutes to look at from our June 17 meeting. Council, you have what's been submitted. Are there any changes, or do we have a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, we do have a time for citizens to come speak to the council about comments for the public matter. Please come up to our podium, use the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. We've got our clock up here on the wall that will count you down, and we will open the floor now. So if you have something you'd like to share, please come forward.
How's everybody doing?
Pull the mic.
Yeah, there you go, and you won't have to slump over.
Awesome. I wanted to come in here today because I think that, obviously, there's towns around here where rents are a lot worse, like Blacksburg and Roanoke and stuff, but if it doesn't get managed now, I don't think it will get managed, and it's just going to get worse, and then we're all going to get priced out. And people that work in Radford may not necessarily be able to afford it, even though someone from out of town can, and Radford could turn into essentially like a bedroom county, but that's really not what I'm worried about. What I'm worried about is what I pay in rent, and that I work 40 hours a week, and I'm not having difficulty doing it, but I just got a 3% raise at work, and I didn't want to do that just to give that extra money straight to my landlord. I'd like to hear Radford has, I don't know how true this is, I just did like a quick Google search, but 57% of Radford is rents, their housing. And it's like a common, I guess, thing that you should spend about 30% of your income on rent or housing, and 30% of income from 57% of people who live in Radford is about 17.1% of income generated from all people who live in Radford is just basically going to landlords, and I don't think we're getting that amount of money put back, we're getting 17.1% of Radford's income back in value for our housing. And it's just getting more expensive, so I would like to see counselors and city managers and mayors and stuff doing more, kind of not leaving any stone unturned, to help 57% of Radford's residents, families, working people, and keep it affordable for us so we don't have to get evicted. Or, I know you said you're limited on what the city can actually do towards that, but there's things people can do, like renters and tenants' unions and stuff like that, see what kind of protections are in place for organizations like that. Just help us out, you know? I'd like to see politicians kind of, no stone unturned, fight tooth and nail, like be passionate about keeping Radford affordable for people who live in Radford right now. So, anyway, I think my three minutes is about up, so thank you for the time. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. And before you go, would you state your name? I'm not sure if you said your name, right?
Oh, I'm Tyler. I work at Radford University.
Which do you like?
Lyons.
Thank you so much.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Absolutely. Anyone else want to come forward to share thoughts for council?
I wasn't sure if this friend was going up. Okay, my name is Beth Barber. I live here in Radford. Okay, I tried to write down because I always get really nervous just standing here.
That's okay.
But what I'm coming back about is the Radford Transit. So I'm checking back to both ask and comment about the Radford Transit. I'm asking about the shelter that, on Mid-Kiff Lane. I brought a very large petition years ago, and we got shelters. Now I'm only asking about getting the one on Mid-Kiff Lane, which is in the Riverbend Apartments. And that petition wasn't nearly as large, but it's still needed, like you can, like today, when it's raining like this, people having to stand outside in it. I know one that isn't, there's a shelter that's not being used. I don't know how much it costs to move or anything. I know it's not something as simple as picking up a chair and just setting it somewhere else. So I was checking back about that. And then my comment will probably tick some people off, but maybe it'll help towards transit costs, which I don't know what exactly their costs are, but obviously, it's not cheap or free. But years ago, at a time that I personally was using the Radford Transit, I had to pay either a dollar for each time that I got on the bus, or buy a monthly pass so I could ride as many times as I needed during that month. Again, I know that'll take some people off, but I don't want us to lose the Radford Transit. And I don't see actually why we aren't like charging that dollar or having to buy that pass. That was like $20 or $30, and then you could just ride it all month as many times as you needed. So, that's all. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other comments that they would like to make on public matters this evening? Seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. I have a couple of quick answers that I wanted to pass out, and Ms. Barber, yours are a little more specific, so we'll have to get more information to be able to share all that information with you. But on the housing piece, and we did talk about this a little bit as we were getting ready for the meeting, quality affordable housing is a challenge for the entire Commonwealth, for the entire nation, and of course, across the New River Valley. I serve on the Regional Commission, and we have been working with the Housing Trust to try to figure out some of that affordable housing piece throughout the valley. One of the pieces that we have worked on as a council, working with our planning commission, working with zoning, has been to try to make the most of the 10 square miles that we have here for new housing, refurbished housing, upgraded housing. That doesn't necessarily help with the cost of your rent for a space, but trying to get more quality housing on the market hopefully helps balance the supply and demand need and provides a way to have better housing choices. Virginia's a Dillon Rule state, and the council and the city are limited in its powers by those powers granted by the General Assembly. As I am aware of right now, the city of Radford does not have rent control capabilities, whether we would want to or not. That's not necessarily a power that we have, and I'll certainly turn to our professionals to say yes or no, you know, maybe that's something that can be looked at. But I think the big challenge is, how do you get a robust enough market in your community so that you have housing at every level? That housing is available for folks who have a very limited income, or maybe even subsidized, that housing is available for that mid-range individual and family, and that housing's available for families that can afford a little bit more. And trying to work on the housing stock, the quality that's available, and the variety is one of the goals that this council and our city has really worked on over the last few years. We have an update to our zoning ordinance coming up later this summer that should help accelerate some of the housing improvement across the city and may help make some adjustments to that. But we hear you because it can be really challenging, and, you know, a quarter of your income, half of your income can make it very difficult to survive, especially in inflationary periods where costs are going up significantly. But thank you for coming to speak with us, and thank you for sharing that concern, and I hope some of the comments have been helpful. Does council have any other comments they would like to make regarding housing?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming and giving us that insight, and I will say, I work in real estate, and finding a rental in Radford at all is extremely challenging, as you know. And so I think a part of what is at play is that supply and demand concept. We just don't have a lot, and what we have is highly sought after, and I know that doesn't make things easier on you, but I think, I mean, we are all very well aware. I know I am very aware. Anyone that follows me on Facebook will see I'm constantly saying, is there a rental in Radford? A three-bedroom, a two-bedroom, a one-bedroom? What do we have? And it's just, it's an ongoing challenge. So I think some of the component is just that supply and demand, and as you know, at Radford, I believe the last statistic that I heard was 80% of their employees do not live in Radford, and that's not because they don't wish to live in Radford, it's that they can't find housing in Radford. We are, when we say we're, you know, I'll say 10 miles, we're going to give it 10, just to round things off a little bit, you know, five miles of that really isn't housing at all. It's university, you have a river that runs through it, you have churches. So now we're down to, yeah, park, now we're down to about, give or take, five miles of housing. So there's a logistical component to this, too, that we don't have any control over, and of course, your rentals are owned by individuals. So then you've got that market to look at, that capitalistic investment component. So it's very complicated, and I think that we all wish that we could do more in these regards, but we have challenges with that just because of the things that I've mentioned. But I think you coming here is such an important reminder to us that, you know, the challenge is real, it's something that our citizens are facing, and something that's an ongoing concern, and we share it, and we're going to turn over every stone we can to, we want you to stay here and to be happy here and to be able to afford to live here, so.
Anyone else have thoughts they want to share regarding housing? Ms. Barber, I'll just briefly mention, I don't know about the shelter piece. I know we've been looking at where we can do shelters and what can be done. I can tell you a little bit about the fares. So during COVID, we actually stopped collecting the fares as part of that process, and that's where that began. Then we discovered as well that it was actually costing us more to try to go and collect the fares and go through that process than we were really making on it. So rather than make it a barrier for people to be able to use the transit system and having a higher fare that might generate more of a margin, so far, the decision has been to keep the, us fare free at this point in time. Melissa, do you have anything you want to share?
Only that, if you recall, I did a request, a four-year grant from GRPT to help with that reimbursement for the amount of fare that comes through. And as a reminder, the majority of our ridership is Raff University students who don't pay that fare in between that and those who are eligible for riding free. It really was not cost-effective, and it really just made an opportunity for us to be able to try and encourage more people to utilize Raff for Transit.
Exactly. And so, you know, just, but I appreciate you bringing it up because not a lot of people know that. We've had these discussions when we're looking at budget, you know, thinking, wow, if we could get a dollar per ride, or $2 per ride, or $5 per ride, or whatever that looks like. But it's a way more complicated issue than that, and we have gone through some things. As Melissa said, she was able to get some reimbursement for where some people would qualify to not have to pay anyway, and so that helps offset some of our costs. But one of our goals with the transit program is to provide that kind of service for our community, for folks that can't get around in other ways. It also helps limit some of our infrastructure costs of bigger roads, additional spaces, things along that line. Transit helps solve many problems, some that are social problems, some that are economic problems as well, and so we really work hard to try to maintain that. For just a couple hundred thousand, we get a several million dollar system here in the city of Radford, and we've worked really hard. Melissa and her team have worked very hard to try to help us keep that cost affordable for the city to maintain that.
Yeah, and I think the one thing that we can continue to do as we move forward is through the budget process, we also work to maybe condense and concise some of these routes, and with some of those savings, address some of the needs that, as far as boosts and being able to wait for ridership. So, so, there's, excuse me, those are some of the things moving forward, that hopefully with condensing routes and making those more efficient, we can use some of those savings to offset some of those other costs. So I appreciate you both for coming up and sharing those concerns with us.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we don't have any old business to discuss tonight, but we have a good bit of new business. As you're aware, the city has participated in the opioid lawsuits that have taken place across the Commonwealth. We have been a participant in those and have benefited with several thousand dollars a year coming into the city. Our outside legal counsel in the litigation has identified several artifact defendants whose role in the opioid litigation was smaller in scope, and so they have been attempting to settle claims as such. Henry Schein and its affiliated companies are considered artifact defendants, and they have a settlement offer of $450,000 for all claims. The city's portion of that, I believe, is only about $1,200, so it is a smaller piece, but every dollar is helpful as we work toward addressing the opioid issue in the city of Radford. So council, you have the resolution to approve the city of Radford's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Henry Schein Incorporated, General Injectables and Vaccines Incorporated, and Source Incorporated. Do you have any questions, or is there a motion to approve the resolution? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We've also received bids for one of our significant chemicals we use in the water treatment plant, and that is incredibly important so we can provide the best quality water in Virginia, which we have been awarded multiple times the gold standard here in the city of Radford. Polyaluminum chloride used as a coagulant in the treatment process, the suppliers of the chemical are very limited, and we received two bids. The lower, the bid that we are taking a look at is from US Alco for 32 and a half cents per liquid pound. The cost for these chemicals is included as part of our annual budget. Counsel, do you all have any questions regarding the bid for the polyaluminum chloride?
Did that fit into our budgeted figure that you said?
It did. Do we have a motion to approve the award of the bid to US Alco?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Speaking of water, we have had rain and significant rain, more than five inches of rain in under 90 minutes on June 26, 2025. Fortunately, our interim city manager was able to declare a local emergency to help the city become eligible for federal and state funding for repairs should funding become available, and tonight, we have a resolution to declare the local emergency, which codifies that emergency status and puts us in position to be able to get any resources that might come available. Counsel, do you all have any questions regarding this resolution? Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll just add to that, that we are continuing to summarize the damages. We had quite a bit in Wildwood Park, more than we first anticipated. Some infrastructure damage along Arm and Trout Circle and in that area, and then city facilities along Park Drive where the electric utility stores some of their materials. We don't have a total yet. I think the hard costs are probably going to be less than $100, but $100,000, 100,000. You know, it, there's still a good bit of assessment that needs to be done, especially to the facilities along Park Street. There's likely not going to be any declaration at the state level because of that flash flood, but experience over the years has taught me, when you have a situation like that, declare a local emergency just in case there's an opportunity to go for those funds. So I appreciate the support of that.
And we can make a request. And we can make a request in our legislative priorities list of our delegate and our senator to try to carry some things forward to the general assembly this next year that could cover that and hopefully that can help us. I know a lot of communities in southwest Virginia after Helene that had declared local emergencies were able to get some additional funding to help with some of the infrastructure damage. So we will at least work toward that. Whether we get any dollars or not, nobody knows, but we will do our best to try to make that happen. Council, you also have a resolution for delinquent accounts. These are uncollectible general accounts. The treasurer's office here in Radford completed a write-off for delinquent uncollectible accounts at the end of fiscal year 2025, which just ended in June. The write-offs included aging utility accounts associated with water, electric, sanitary sewer and sanitation billing. A resolution has been prepared that addresses formal procedures for this write-off and the resolution would authorize the treasurer to write off any fees or charges associated with utility accounts that are deemed uncollectible after five years from the date payment was due. I'm in favor of us moving forward at some point, but right now, I'd really like to get a little more information about this, to understand more about why some of the accounts were uncollectible. I mean, some of them, we, we can probably understand that folks moved, it was hard to get in touch with them, but it is a fairly large amount of money that we would like to at least make sure we've done our due diligence before we move forward. Are there any other comments or questions, council?
Do we know what kind of figure we're looking at here?
I can add some things to that and I apologize. With me being out last week, I wasn't able to get some of this out to you guys. The, the total that we're looking at is about $952,000. And the reason that number is so large is that there, there are two categories of write-offs. One are what are called general billings, things like miscellaneous garbage charges, haul water charges, pole rentals, charges for city damages. Those are things that in years past, the city through the treasurer's office has billed, but those have never been collected. Those have not been pursued. Those uncollectible accounts have been accumulating since at least fiscal year 2008. Those have not been written off. The auditors have pointed out in multiple years that if those are amounts that are uncollectible, either because the folks are deceased or folks have moved, you know, at some point when you're carrying receivables, if you're not collecting them, you simply need to write them off. There's no point in carrying accounts for collection that you're just not going to collect. The other portion of those fees that are being written off are utility bills that are older than two years old. If they're less than 24 months old, there's still a reasonable assumption that those have the potential to be collected. However, once they go past 24 months, it's the auditor's recommendation, and I agree with that, that you need to write them off. Now, if you subsequently collect them, you can bring them back on and show them as collected. But the vast majority of that 952,000 are, in essence, miscellaneous odds and ends charges that go all the way back to fiscal year 2008.
What's the process and whose responsibility to go after the money legally?
The treasurer.
Do we have any control?
Not, not as, not in the way things are currently structured, no.
Can, can you maybe tell us a little more about the policies and procedures that we should consider so that we do have a record of, of, one, what, what is out there still so that we know that? And two, efforts that are being made?
When that number was presented to me, I was just looking through my emails as we were going through this evening. That, the first time I became aware of this was Monday, June 30th, so two weeks ago tonight. Two weeks, three weeks. That's a staggering figure. And it's an amount that should have been dealt with one way or the other over the years. It should have been written off sooner if it's truly uncollectible, which honestly, if there's charges that go back all the way to fiscal year 2008, you know, it, it's not collectible at that point, you know? Honestly, most, under audit practices, if it's older than five years, you should write it off because you're just highly unlikely to collect it. But, but these are fees and charges that, that go back many years, like I said, for a variety of things. I cannot tell you, and I was looking to see if I saw the spreadsheet, I do not have the spreadsheet that breaks down how much of that is utilities versus general, general receivables. They are, they are not taxes. They are not real estate. You cannot write off real estate taxes. Those, those stay on the books until they are collected or otherwise disposed of.
Off the top of your head, do you have a figure of how many uncollected real estate taxes are out there, just roughly, or?
No, and that's, going back to the comment that you made earlier, I do think that there's got to be some, Todd and I have already had some conversations, there's got to be some process for some accountability with reporting to the council. I mean, the, the treasurer's office receives some funds from the city general revenues to support positions and support operations. There, there's got to be some accountability for, for how those fees and charges are being collected, especially the utility fees. Because as we well know, we've continued to languish behind, in my opinion, on some of the collections this year, which has been one of the revenue challenges we've had in, in getting caught up on some of the AEP bills. And there's got to be a better, there's got to be a better reconciliation and accountable presentation to this body on how to, how to stay on top of that. Yeah, that, like I said, I was looking, that was Monday, the thirteenth, that's probably why I got sick though. That was Monday, the thirtieth.
Well, and, and to that point, you know, this isn't something we've been talking about for months and we're coming to a resolution of it. I would just like us to pump the brakes a little bit on it tonight, even though I agree with the concept. If this is a $25 charge from 2008, that's probably not going to be collectible. But we can't really say out of nearly a million dollars, what exactly we're authorizing to be written off, what years those are from, what efforts were made to collect those. It may have been a Herculean effort that we're unaware of, but we probably need to be made aware of it before we move forward with action, at least in my opinion.
I agree.
I think, I think the key thing, and I commend Calista for, for moving this along, is this has been a recurring issue with the auditors every year, that these old delinquent accounts are just languishing on the city's books. They do need to be written off to, to clean that up, but you can make an entry in August that goes back to June, so.
Well, and I'd like us just to make sure that everybody sitting up here before they cast a vote to say we're not going to collect a million dollars is comfortable with why, especially in the situation that we find ourselves where that million dollars would be helpful if we had it. Now again, I'm not saying there's a million dollars we're going to go collect out there, but I just want to make sure that we're able to express to our community to say, this is something that we've gone through, we're sure about, we understand that this isn't collectible any longer and we're going to move forward, but we just need to all make sure we're comfortable.
And I would like to see a better breakdown. Obviously, you know, someone's that is deceased is a little bit different than someone that moved out of the community, you know, 22 months ago. So I think having an idea of what that breakdown looks like, and then to be honest, since it is an auxiliary arm of what we do as a council, what, what is our process? What does our collection process look like right now? Do we have teeth behind it? Are there things that we can attach to? What does that look like? What's the timeframe for that? I mean, what is the best practice for that? And again, because it's sort of an auxiliary and not one that, that we necessarily oversee, I do think that, like you said, there needs to be some accountability because that money needs to go into the budget to run the community and it's community money. So those are two things. One is just getting a better breakdown of what those accounts look like, not only which fund they're, they're in, but also, you know, maybe weeding out the deceased and then getting an idea of what our process is and what we can do to remedy that, maybe to get some of these payments brought in.
Okay.
And I'd also like to, I definitely want to see the due diligence. I want to see what's broken down. Is this something that all communities are? I mean, can we get other, another idea of what other, I mean, you can, you can probably speak to your municipality there, Todd, but is this something that is kind of, you know, across the board? Is this a really high number? I'm assuming that it is for area or surrounding areas. And I, I want some accountability and I want to be able to know at least on a quarterly basis what this number is and how it's being managed. That's.
I think that's something can be looked at. I, you know, I think one, one reason the number is, is, is big as it is, because when I started asking questions last week or the week of the 30th, the general utility or general receivables, according to, to staff, have not been written off since at least 2008. So when you accumulate 14, 15, 16 years of.
Yeah, and I know that that's going to skew the numbers, but.
So that needs to come off for sure, but then you need a process every quarter, every year of where are we on the receivables and what's being done to address those so that they don't start piling up again.
And if there is a way to compare, I mean, I, I know we don't need to compare 2008 until, all the way up until now, because that's going to skew the numbers. But I mean, looking at a five-year, you know, for other municipalities, i- is this something, is our number for five years or how, whatever the, you know, typical write-off is, is it higher than everybody else's and why that is? Is it because of our process? Is it because of our lack of due diligence? Are we doing due diligence that's not effective? Are we doing more than what we should be doing and, and could six sigma the, the issue? I just, that's, that's a.
Yes.
I can see why you'd be sick by that number. That's crazy.
That was a Monday gut punch, for sure.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to get into that.
Yep, so we'll just pause that for tonight, if that pleases council. We'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting, have a little more discussion and just make sure that we're in a good place before we, we make that decision and go from there. I do very much appreciate the effort from the treasurer's office and from the finance office to put together this report, to get to write-offs if that's the path we need to take. But just to make sure we're all on the same page and that we're fully understanding what we're talking about before we make that big decision is, is helpful.
Yes, sir.
Moving forward, we do have something exciting to talk about. The Radford Community Fest will be held on August 23rd, 2025 and will, is planned to take place on East Main Street between Tyler and Third Avenue. Community Fest chairs have requested East Main Street be closed that day for the event. Melissa is our city's co-chair for the event. And council, what is your pleasure? Do we have a motion to move forward with the closure of Main Street for August 23rd?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and for folks that are concerned about that, they do a great job. I was there last year. We didn't close the road till about 5:00, 6:00 AM, something like that. And then as soon as the program was over, everybody got everything cleaned up and we were open later that evening. So it's a very efficient process. We have wonderful police and, and city support to make that happen and I think that's going to be a real positive for the city. It gives our businesses a great opportunity to have thousands and thousands of people on Main Street to showcase what we have in this wonderful community and to give people a chance to gather together. So really excited about that. Really, really a good event. Okay, council, we have six appropriation ordinances and I will ask the pleasure of council if we can go through each one, but then vote on all of them at the end. We will need to look at a second reading if there's less than four affirmative votes, but if that would please council to go through all of these and then just vote on them as consent agenda at the end with both a motion and a motion to dispense with the second reading if we have four affirmative votes. Does that please our council?
Absolutely.
Okay. Appropriation ordinance 1814.01, VDEM PSAP GIS data management grant. The police department has been awarded $8,000 to pay for GIS software programs, data maintenance costs related to GIS data layers, critical for next generation 911 with no local match, which is outstanding. Appropriation ordinance 1814.02, VDEM PSAP PEP grant. The Radford City Police Department has been awarded the individual PSAP education program grant from VDEM for 2026 in the amount of $4,000 and it's to help pay for 911 and GIS education training opportunities. Again, no local match required and these are, are both excellent in helping get our public safety 911 in good shape. Appropriation ordinance 1814.03, first responder wellness grant. We have been, the city police department has been awarded the Office of First Responder Wellness Grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $26,178. The grant provides for funding for therapeutic equipment that enhances physical and mental wellness of first responders. Once again, there is no local match. Appropriation ordinance 1814.04, school resource officer grant. Radford City Police Department received a grant in the amount of $73, $75,306 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Service. The funds are be, to be used to support school resource officer program at Bell Heath and the funds are for salary-related items for one resource officer. A local match of $14,973 is required and can be accommodated from the existing department budget that we have already approved. The grant funds themselves, though, were not programmed in the development of the fiscal year 2026 budget and require appropriation. Appropriation ordinance 1814.05, VDEM call handling equipment grant. The city police department has been awarded the shared services call handling equipment grant from VDEM for 2026 in the amount of $300,000. The grant is made available to pay for costs incurred in the upgrade of call handling equipment for the 911 center. This equipment is utilized to process administrative and 911 phone lines as an integral in the operation of a 911 center. Currently, Radford City Communications is operating on equipment that is seven years old and reaching the recommended end of service life. This upgrade would not only replace aging equipment, but would allow access to newer technologies that enhance the capabilities and resiliency of the 911 center. Total cost of the project is $371,460 over a five-year period. The grant funds can be utilized in the initial purchase of the equipment and will cover first year of costs. The remaining $71,460 can be paid annually over years two through five of the contract. And council, this provides us with upgrades again to our 911 phone line and operations center. Our appropriation ordinance 1814.06, Operation Ceasefire Grant. Radford City Police Department has been awarded funds from the Department of Criminal Justice Services Operation Ceasefire Grant Program in the amount of $130,855. This grant provides funds from the state to support localities and their use of technology that aid in the reduction of violent crime within the Commonwealth. The police department is seeking to utilize the funds to purchase integrated ballistic identification system to aid in firearm investigations through the use of the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. There's no local match required. So council, we have those appropriation ordinances. First, before we get into any resolution, do you have any questions about any of the ordinances or anything that you would want to know more about?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank Chief Holdaway and the police department for all the work that goes behind getting these grants to not only, you know, make your department better, but also in an efficient way. So I just want to say thank you for all the effort that went into, to acquiring these. So thank you.
Yeah, and I was just going to ask the question, do you have a grant person or do all of you pitch in and go after a different grant or how are you doing this marvelous job?
I have the most unfair job in the world. I get to get your guys praise and accolades about these grants, but Michael Mansdorfer, one of our captains, is a phenomenal grant writer and he spends the majority of his time researching some of these grants. He's on some different committees and so forth, but it, the majority of these grants come from Michael.
The majority of the grants come from Michael Mansdorfer, though.
Oh, Mans, Mans, how you say it again?
Mansdorfer. Michael Mansdorfer, he's the captain, yes, sir.
Applause for Captain Mansdorfer. Good job.
You need it. You need to get him in here so we can thank him personally one, one meeting, please.
He will be here the next meeting, sir.
Okay, great. Wonderful job.
Any other questions or comments before we move forward? I'll just say excellent job, chief. Excellent job, Captain Mansdorfer and the entire Radford City Police Department team. Council, do we have a motion for approving appropriation ordinances 1814.01 through 1814.06?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading for appropriation ordinances 1814.01 through 1814.06. Is there a motion that we dispense with a second reading?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Meadows, what comments do you have for us this evening?
Just a few comments at my last meeting this evening. First off, I wanted to let you know that I had a good conversation with the Public First off, I wanted to let you know that I had a good conversation with the Public Works Director this morning about the situation with the flags not being posted for the Fourth of July. I can assure everyone that will not happen again. There were several things at play there, but the bottom line is I know that was a disappointment to some in the community not to have those, and the Public Works Director and I had a conversation about that. He agreed that he understood that was a disappointment and that will not be an issue going forward. So we apologize for that. There's a lot of, lot of things moving and going on right now, but that's, we, we should expect better in our community, and we will make sure that is taken care of going forward. I did mention earlier in the meeting, we are still assembling a list of damages and odds and ends from the June 26th flash flood. I know that there's also been several meetings with FEMA in recent weeks regarding the Helene damages, and those, those reimbursements are proceeding. We don't have a check in the hand yet, but those are proceeding, and Charlie and Jenny and several of our staff have, have been involved in meetings and discussions, and we will certainly, that is, that is at the top of the list to continue to pursue with FEMA.
There's no reason to think it won't proceed.
There's, there's no reason to think it won't. I will just tell you, you know, from past experience in other communities, it can take FEMA up to two years to process claims. Now, they have indicated in at least some of the meetings that they think that will occur sooner, but I've learned with those federal agencies, until it's in your hand, it's not done. So that'll be, that'll be on the list as well. It, it is my last week as interim, and it, it's really bittersweet, to be candid with you. I think coming into this role in January, I don't think any of us at that point realized some of the challenges that we were going to be facing as we went through the budget season. You know, the, the budget was quite the challenge. I know for citizens in the community, it was, was and is a, a challenge as well, but I do think there were many good decisions made during that process. As I told you guys several meetings ago, you guys are to be commended for making some of the hard choices that had to be made to get Radford where it needs to be. You know, the finances are, are, they're a little less of a challenge. They're still a challenge. The financing that the city closed on a couple of weeks ago allowed for the city to pay off the revenue anticipation note and not have to take a new revenue anticipation note for fiscal year 26. Yes, that added some long-term debt that has to be paid over time, but the bigger thing that that did for the city is it gave the city some breathing room to be able to address some other issues. The other part of that refinancing was to borrow some money that was put in escrow to help defees some of the existing debt, again, to buy some existing, to buy some breathing room for the city as you go into this fiscal year. You just, you know, the, the challenges, you know, I know people in the community are upset about increased rates. I know people that are upset about the fact that the city's behind on its own electric utility bills. You know, last week for one day, we were down to three, and then the June bill came in and we're back to four. The, with AEP, the positive there is because of that readjustment that we did with the finances, we should have some cash flow as we go through the end of July and into August to be able to begin to start paring down those AEP bills. That has just, it's, it's been a huge challenge, and one of the things that I've been very frustrated about, and I'm hoping to be able to have some time before I wrap up, is to, to really get an understanding of the revenue collections and how things are being collected versus being billed, because the city has made good steps in addressing some of these challenges. It's just the pieces of the puzzle, for some reason, just aren't still lining up. And I look forward to, as Todd comes on board, having conversations with Todd about my observations and what I've seen, and hopefully, you know, if there's an opportunity to help with some of that, I'm more than happy to continue to help. The finances are a challenge. The other big thing that I want to leave the community with is what I've, what I've sensed since day one in Radford is there is such a sense of community pride in Radford. You know, Bobcat proud, just you ride around in this community, it, every time I ride around into a new neighborhood in Radford, I am so impressed with what is here. But I'm also very distressed that there seems to be a segment of the population that just no matter what the city does to try to rectify where things are right now, is just hypercritical. And, you know, the, the thing I wrote down is, is a community, you're either pulling together or you're pulling apart, and this community has so many wonderful assets that it needs to be pulling together, and it's not, is it hard? Yes. Are there going to still be some hard decisions? Yes. Are rates and fees going to be a challenge? Yes. So are they in every other community. This is not a unique to Radford thing. The, the current challenges have been a bit unique, but every community is facing some of these challenges. This community needs to pull together. It needs to support the elected officials. You don't have to, you know, that's not a D or an R statement. It's a statement of what is right for the community, because if Pete, if you're out in the community and all you're doing is criticizing decisions, criticizing, just criticizing, you know, candidly, if you're not willing to come in here, stand at a podium, and speak to this group about your concerns and why they're important to you, then I, you know, it, it's easy to throw rocks at glass houses, but it, it takes a lot of courage and effort for folks that are elected, and I'll say this for the staff, too. There's one heck of a staff in Radford. You guys are, you know, that was the other thing I talked to you about from the beginning. The staff is very thin. There's not a lot of people here doing the work every day. That's not a criticism. It's just where Radford is as a community. But there are a lot of good people working for this city. Do they make mistakes? Absolutely. Do they make decisions sometimes that you, yes, but they're working hard for the city. So the, the thought that I wrote down that I wanted to leave is, is, as the community moves forward, continue to pull together. Staff's committed to working with council. Council, I know, is committed to working with staff. Pull together. And if you're one that wants to pull apart, then I think you should probably be looking elsewhere about why you're here to start with. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, I, I'll just speak briefly to say, I don't think we can thank you enough for all that you've done for us over the last six months for sure, and a little bit longer than that. This has been a more challenging time than I think anyone in the community even can begin to understand. As we faced issues that we thought were in a very different place, as we unpacked things that we thought were much more solvent and taken care of, we really needed a guiding hand and experience to help us through this process. We're here as volunteers. We all come from different backgrounds and different experiences, but none of us are an expert in local municipal finance and, and government accounting and all of those pieces. Without your help, I don't know that we could have managed through this, so I don't think we can say thank you enough.
Honors. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, even though we're saying farewell as interim city manager, there's going to be more to the story, and we'll talk about that at, at a little bit later time. Council, what do you all have? Seth, what do you have for us this evening?
Sure. I'll build upon it. It's, I don't want to repeat myself, but it's worth repeating. Thank you, Craig. You've been, you know, a friend, a mentor, a guiding hand for all of us during some really, really tough times and challenges, and you've really, you, you walked into a, to a situation where there was a lot of upheaval and a lot of uncertainty, and you've helped steady the ship and get us pointed in the right direction, and we're thankful, and I know that you're, you're setting Todd up for success. We all want to have a lot of success for Todd for many years to come, and I know that you're taking as many steps as you can to get him there, and, and we appreciate all your efforts and all you've done. So again, thank you. We're all, we're all saying, we're going to say it again, thank you for all you've done. We appreciate you more than you know. I guess I'll just go ahead and, and wrap up a couple of my comments. I, I hope everyone did have a good fourth. I thought the fireworks were awesome this year. You talk about an example of Radford pride, that the fact that we were able to have an anonymous donor step up in a time of need says a lot about this community, and, you know, just another tick mark of what makes Radford a special place. And I do think the businesses were absolutely hopping that night. I've talked to Dan McKinney at the Chamber, and I happened to be at one of the local establishments, and it was standing room only. So seeing the people out, having a good time, hopefully generating some revenue for the city was a good thing, so I was, I was happy, happy to hear that. Also, wanted to thank all the city staff for their response and their efforts for the flash flood that we had. That was a lot of rain in a very short amount of time. Never thought I'd see Sheriff Farmington Trout's yard or river, but it was, it was wild, so I'm hopeful, fingers crossed, that there's not extensive damage, but it looks like we, we probably avoided worst-case scenario, so that's, that's good. I was able to help celebrate Meg's being in business for thirty, 39 years downtown, so that's another Radford staple, so congratulations to, to her and her business, and love to see our local businesses succeed, and you, 39 years isn't an accident. That takes a lot of hard work, commitment, believing in yourself and the community, believing in you. So congratulations to her and all of our Radford businesses. There's a lot that we're very fortunate to have. I, I was able to get an update on the West Radford Commerce Park, and it looks like a, a bid was accepted to remove the concrete pad, and fingers crossed, it looks like there might be some savings with that that will be able to apply to, to, to other things to get that property ready. When we talk about the challenges that we're facing, I think that that's one of the bright spots for the future that really can bring jobs and industry and hopefully revenue and could really, really be a special place. It has been, it was for many, many years in Radford and has the potential to be again. So I wanted to thank Kim, the EDA, and staff for helping to keep that process move along. I know that we're all really excited about that, and by all intensive purposes, it's moving, moving along, so I was glad to hear that, and I think that last I heard that those efforts would be underway soon to start getting that out of here, and that's just one more step down. So that's all I got. Thank you. And lastly, Todd, welcome. I've already talked to you, and I'm excited to have you. We all are. You're the man for the job, and I know you're going to do great things, so we're really excited to get to work with you and welcome to Radford, so, yeah.
Thank you, Seth. Guy, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, I want to go back to Todd also and ask the citizens of Bradford to, that believe in the power of prayer, to be lifting this young man up as he takes his position to, to lead our, our city staff and, and workers. And while you're down there praying, you might lift us here on the council up a, a little bit, too, because there's still some, some hard times ahead, some challenges, but we're going to meet them head-on. Secondly, I wanted, I, I guess the fact that Jenny's leaving is public knowledge, isn't it?
I, I had that written down. I did not make that public.
Well, if it wasn't, I certainly made it, didn't I?
Well, yeah, Jenny Webb, who has been with the city for a number of years, let us know on Friday that she's accepted a position with Virginia Tech. Her last day with the city will be August 8th. It's a, it's a great opportunity for Jenny. It's going to be a huge loss for the city, and, and as I said, you know, creates, creates another opportunity for Todd to help sort through, but we wish Jenny all the best. She'll, she'll do great.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up, since she's not here, and she won't be here for our next meeting. I haven't known Jenny that long. I mean, I've known of her, but just for the last six months have I gotten to work with her and, and find out, you know, what an integral part she is to the, to the system. And I know it's a, an opportunity for her to grow professionally, to grow in knowledge, to take on more responsibility, and I just wish her well and thank her for all that she's done for the city. For about how many years? Anybody know?
About 15.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, yeah. So she's been around.
It's been a while.
Yeah. And I was going to bring up Chief Holdaway and his bunch, but I think we took care of him good enough a little while ago. Lastly, to Craig, I don't know there, if there are enough superlatives that can be used.
Thank you.
To, to expand on what you've done for us, and it's just been a, a pleasure to have you, a pleasure to work with you. Appreciate you so very much, and just wish you the best in, in your future.
Thank you, Guy. It's been an honor. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Guy. Jesse, what do you have for us this evening?
All right. Had a Heritage Foundation meeting, and they wanted me to remind everyone, Mary Draper Ingalls Festival, July 25th through the 27th. I'll be putting these out in the lobby and passing them out to council, so please join us. They do an amazing job and bring people in, I mean, actually, not only from all over Virginia, but U.S., and we've even had some international visitors to that event. With the Chamber, they are doing the Five After Five at the River Course. The next one is going to be on the 22nd, so obviously that Five After Five, that Five o'clock is the, one of the Fives, but there's food, golf, fellowship. I think they may be having music as well, so try to get out there and support that. I wanted to thank the chief during the flash flood. I'll be honest, I was in Blacksburg, and my phone was blowing up, and I was like, this, what in the world? What is going on in Radford? Is it a crisis? And I immediately started coming back towards Radford, and I was astounded. It was a total different weather environment than the one I had just experienced in Blacksburg. So the chief was able to help me get out and about and see what was going on firsthand, and it was humbling, to say the least, to see that much damage happen in such a small amount of time. I walked away from that just thinking as much as we think we organize our lives and we coordinate things, that Mother Nature will humble us very quickly and show us how little control we have, because that spiraled very quickly. And so thank you to everyone that was out within the city staff, and we had people out worrying with electricity, closing down roads, ensuring people's safety. So, I mean, it really was a joint effort with all the departments coming together, and so thank you. And again, thank you, chief, for helping me ascertain exactly what was going on, because I certainly did not have a good sense of it coming into it. Department of Social Services meeting. I did mention that we are hoping to see some savings, which it does appear that that will be the case, but it's a little bit of a mixed bag, of course. There's, I, I believe there'll be a request for some additional funds to be allocated, and there's just, again, these are required. It's not something we get to determine. If our, if our kids in our community need assistance, then, you know, we're obligated to step up and help them, but there's still more savings than, than the, the burden of, of additional funding needed, so that's still some good news. I just wanted to shout out to Angie Covey. She had her retirement party from New River, and I just wanted to say, all the work that she's done with the ACE program and all that she's, she's given to the communities at large in the New River Valley is, is amazing and such an, an attribute of her heart. I mean, that really was a work of love for her that she envisioned and was able to make happen, so just a little special thank you to Angie Covey. And then the CPMT, and that's about it for, for the last few weeks. And again, just, I, I know you guys are going to hear the same thing out of all of us, so exactly what everyone else said, but just on a personal note, you know, Craig, you had to come in and really deliver a very bitter pill to us, and that was not easy, but you did it in exactly the way that we asked you, transparent, up and, you know, open, honest, and just, you know, take any, any bandage off, any gauze, whatever was going, you know, just get, pull it off. Let's see what's going under there, you know, under there so we can actually start dealing with it. And I know that that was not always easy for you, but I appreciate you doing that and giving us better insight so we can choose a path for the future that is healthier for our community. And we are, we are very excited to have you coming on board, Todd. I know that, you know, we respect Craig, obviously, a great deal, and he respects you a great deal, and that was not lost on any of us here. So we look forward, and, and I will tell the community, in all the years that I have looked at resumes, this was probably the best batch of resumes that I have ever seen. We really couldn't narrow the resumes down any further than interviewing eight people, and that was really trying to par off. That's how many wonderful, exceptional people that we had that still see our community for where it's headed and what its potential is and, and who we are existing. But at the end of the day, Todd, you're, you know, your interviews, your interaction with us, your insight, your promise, your optimism, but yet I think the Sig Sigma side of you, you're, you know, we, we want that. We want that, that linear thinking. We appreciate that. We're glad to have you bring that to help our city, and welcome. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Kelly, what do you have for us this evening?
It's tough being the last one. I don't typically go last. Everybody is, has such as wonderful things, so I could say ditto and, and not say anything else. I do, we did have a joint commission meeting, and a lot of people in that group and, and other people not in that group at Radford University are working towards a kind of a strategic framework of how we can better collaborate as a community and as a university to develop collaborative initiatives in the district, enhance workforce development pipelines, support business growth and retention. They're working on getting a grant to do a study on what would be sustainable. What does the city need with the students? do a study on, um, what would be sustainable? What does the city need with the students? What does the city need without the students? Is it, are they being impactful in these areas? Are they kind of hurting the city in other areas? So they're, they're wanting to, um, work towards that to help see what they can do to make their impact in the city a little bit better. Um, to increase community vibrance, to work on the outdoor recreation, to do tourism development if they can help in any way. Um, David Perryman, who is someone I very much enjoy, um, did a little video that was really good. Um, and I have asked, uh, are you representative to come to our August meeting to kind of highlight the things that the university does offer for the citizens? So they have a phenomenal library and I know that, um, there was a lot of heartburn on us having to cut a few hours and things like that. So when our community library can't, um, provide open availability, um, or it's, they're having an event and, and there are other people that need to use computers or books or something like that. You can always go to, um, the university library and many other assets that they have. So, um, just letting everyone know what's available to them. Um, I wanted to thank Morgan Griffith for coming to, um, the luncheon that he hosted and speaking with us about things going on, um, a little bit higher up in the state. I know several of us went to that. So we thank him for coming. Um, man, kudos to the, to Mike for writing all those grants. That's amazing. And I know that you guys have a great team, but that's, grant writing is difficult. Um, and doing that on top of your regular job is, is also hard. So thank you to him. Um, thank you to everyone that responded to all of the weather that we've had. It was a torrential downpour coming from Blacksburg to here today. So I was glad it stopped for the most part when I got here, but we just, we can't get enough of the, of the quick downpours. Um, thank you for looking into, um, getting us emergency funds to help with that. That was a very, um, quick thought by you, Craig. And I can't say enough about everything that you have done. You walked into what you probably thought was a mess and quickly realized that it was a little bit more to take on than what you did. But you took that corner office with stride and that revolving door. I know that was constantly moving and taking, you know, your time away from, from what you really wanted to focus on, but, but still gave your time and so many more hours than what we contracted you for. Many more hours. Um, and I just want to say I really appreciated your comment about our community. Um, we are a very resilient, vibrant community and we do love our city very much. But you made a very good point that you were either working together in your community or you're pulling apart. I'm so thankful for the, um, anonymous donor who gave us the ability to have fireworks this year. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had fireworks at all. And I know that there were a lot of people that I saw online that were very appreciative and loved them and thought they were great, but then there was just as many people that were fussing, why are they on the third? Why, you know, who's paying for them? Is it a, just, I, I want everybody to understand that we are doing everything we can to give the community everything that they have had and make sure that everything continues for them. And the fact that we have a community that wants to help provide what the city can't right now is a testament to how wonderful our citizens are. And I hope that we continue to be thankful for everything that we as a council are doing. I hope that we continue to be very thankful for what all of our employees are doing. We are very thin. They are working much harder than, than probably what a lot of the areas are doing. And we cannot thank them enough for sticking through this difficult time with us. We could not do it without our employees and our staff. They are invaluable. Um, and I, and I hope, yeah, I hope the citizens realize and appreciate how hard we're working. I know that most of them do, but there are some very negative people that, um, you know, tend to be loud. And I hope that we can, um, turn their attitude around and show them how hard we're working and they will see what we're trying to accomplish. Um, Todd, you're going to be a huge asset. I can't wait to, to get to work with you. I know Craig is gonna stay along and help and has already mentored you so far. You come from a great community already. Um, so I know that you're going to help us move even forward than we already are. Um, I'm very excited about Community Fest. I can't wait. It was a very great, um, event last year and I know it will be this year. Thank you guys for all your hard work and we can't wait to hear more about it next meeting, hopefully. Have a little bit more insight as to what all the logistical things are.
We'll be happy to put together a presentation.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and thank you to council again. I hope you guys had a happy fourth. I hope you have a great rest of your summer until I see you again. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Um, you know, I, I'll just touch on a couple of quick things. The Mary Draper Ingalls Festival coming up at the end of the month. It's always the last weekend of the month, twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh of July this year. Uh, that is designated by the Commonwealth. I know that, uh, the Harshbergers are here. They did a lot in helping to make that happen and we're so appreciative of sharing Mary's story in that way for fifty years, uh, and, and longer as we have done that. Um, there was a wonderful kickoff event last Thursday here in council chambers with a fantastic panel discussion headed up moderated by Scott Gardner, our executive director of Glenco Mansion. And it really helped delve into a lot of the history of Mary's story, but also contextualized the Native American and the early frontier settlers, conflicts and, and concerns and, and really gave a lot more insight into that very complicated story to help people understand. Hopefully, understanding where we've been, the challenges that we've faced as a region over, uh, really hundreds and hundreds of years helps to contextualize where we are today. And just looking at the steadfastness of the people that lived here, the, the desire to move forward regardless of the odds and to band together to build a future, hopefully inspires us all. And I hope that weekend coming up here in a couple of weeks is inspiring to you and that you'll come out and participate. Uh, next Wednesday, the twenty-third, the sheriff's office is hosting their annual kids' summer camp. I spoke with the sheriff earlier today. They do still have some slots available. So please get the word to everybody in the community that Radford City Kids, uh, are going to have a sheriff's office sponsored summer camp next Wednesday, the twenty-third down in the park. We would love to see lots of families participate and enjoy that opportunity to come together and learn skills, have an opportunity to engage with some of our professionals in the community and get to know more about Radford as well. Um, I'll just say thank you again to all who helped make our fireworks and our Independence Day celebration the best that we could have in this, uh, situation we're in. And it was a wonderful fireworks show. Uh, we had a bigger and better show than just about anybody and we're always impressed that it takes a team effort to pull that off. So we are thrilled that not only did we have a, a donor who helped us make it happen, but also our police and our fire and EMS and our public, uh, our parks and public works crews helped do all of that to, to make that a wonderful event. There's lots of great stuff going on at the Radford Public Library. If you haven't been, you need to check it out. You need to go enjoy some of the activities. Uh, if you haven't been down recently, go down and visit them and, and be sure to check out all the wonderful things that they have in store. There's something every week that's for the entire family. Uh, there are wonderful things happening in the city of Radford and I hope we can all continue to showcase the good things. We can identify the problems, but I'll also ask that every time we identify a problem, let's bring an idea for a solution to the table as well. Uh, this podium is always open at every council meeting. This, uh, forum is available to you to use as a sounding board and as a debate platform for us to decide the future of this community. We've come a long way in the last year and we have a long way to go, but we have great opportunity to do wonderful things as we turn the page and start a new chapter for the city of Radford. Todd, we are so excited with your leadership. Next Monday is going to be a new day for the city. I will ask this of those who are here and those watching online, those who are participating. Give us a chance to make that difference. We have new leadership in our community. Give Todd a chance as your city manager to work through things. It's not a magic wand. It's not a switch that flips overnight that changes everything, but with leadership and the wonderful staff, the team members that we have as part of our community, we have the opportunity to do wonderful things here in the city of Radford. Give us that opportunity. Be a part of the team and help move us forward. All of us will benefit from that opportunity and we can do this if we pull together. So having said that, we do need to go into closed session to discuss a little bit of business. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Seth.
I'd like to make a motion to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body and evaluation of performance of departments under Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A1.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second? A motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're going to take just a few minutes to talk. Thank you all so much.